Good evening, welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting of the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, September 13th. If you are watching live, Monday, September 13th, we encourage you to call in if you have comments or questions. Our call-in number is (769) 1677. I remind you, as I always do, that you can also watch live on PCTV76.org on the web, and also on Cablevision. And I can report that this week Verizon, which has been selling its FiOS service here in the village since last spring, is about to make good on the requirement that they carry the public education, the government education and PCTV channels. And they have been doing wiring around the village. PCTV will be carried on Verizon FiOS channel 36. The school channel will be channel 32. And the government channel is as yet to be identified, but we expect to know that by next week. It's not absolutely clear when those channels will go live, but we have reason to think it may be within the next week. So that will give you the option of coming to visit us face-to-face, watching on the web, either live or through on-demand webcasting, or on either Verizon or Cablevision. So you have plenty of opportunities to get tired of watching us. Our next work session is Monday, September 20 at 7:00 PM. And our next regular meeting is Monday, September 27 at 8:00 PM with a work session at 7:00. And a couple announcements to make, and the first one is on a sad note. As many of you know, we have a longstanding police officer who retired with the rank of detective, Artie Glass, who was a fixture here in the Village of Pleasantville for several decades, passed away a couple of weeks ago. And we join his colleagues on the Police Department and all of the employees here in the village, as well as the Village Board and the village itself, in extending our condolences to the family. Artie, as I mentioned, was a fixture in Pleasantville, and his loss came too early. So, a sad note for the village. Couple of other things to comment on. We mentioned last meeting that Metro North is anticipating some structural repairs on the railroad bridge at Sunnyside Avenue. That's that narrow one-lane bridge that you encounter when you turn off marble. We have a little further information, and that is that they were a little fast on the draw, putting up these detour signs, which are partly covered, and they haven't actually not begun the work yet. But the work is going to happen in a sort of an intermittent basis, because what they're doing is making some structural repairs that require one of the tracks being taken out of service so that they can improve the structure beneath. So, my understanding at the moment is that the work may take as much as a year, but that it will primarily be happening on weekends. There will be some periods of time when you can't drive through there, but the expectation is that during the week pedestrian traffic, as well as car traffic, will be restored. So, there are going to be some intermittent closings, but we were concerned at one point that kids who are walking from the school area down to the fields for after-school activities would have a problem. It sounds as though they won't. So, we'll let you know when we know more. They haven't identified a starting date, but it does not sound like it will be as disruptive as we first thought. And rest assured, the work is only to repair the existing bridge. There is no talk of widening it or otherwise changing it. The last thing I wanted to mention is that we got the news that we get this time of year from the New York State Controller's Office regarding our anticipated contribution to the pension funds next year. As you may recall, if you followed the budget process, last year we were hit with a very, very substantial increase in the neighborhood of 60% in our required pension contribution to the New York State Pension Funds. And the state controller, who is the trustee of those funds, has issued a press release a couple of weeks ago that says that the average contribution rate for the employee retirement system, that's non-uniformed employees, will increase from 11.9% of salaries to 16.3% of salaries, and that the average contribution for the police and fire retirement system is increasing from 18.2% to 21.6%. So what that means for us is roughly 37% increase in pension costs for non-uniformed employees, and a roughly 19% increase in pension costs for uniformed employees. That coming on top of increases that were even larger than that for the fiscal year we confront right now. So, this reflects, and I'll read this next paragraph, and you can take from it what you will. Quote, "By law, we're required to review our assumptions every five years, including the assumption for the investment rate of return on pension fund investments. By practice, we review those assumptions every year. The actuary follows a prescribed lengthy and diligent process defined by statute with both internal and external review. Today, I am accepting the assumption recommendations from the Retirement Systems Actuary, including his recommendation to lower the assumed investment rate of return to 7.5%." So, here's hoping we all do as well over the coming years. At any rate, that's an unhappy bit of news for our budget that we will be working on next spring, suggesting that we confront some of the same problems we confronted this year again next year. So, lastly, I wanted to comment that a lot of you have been visiting the farmer market. It's bigger and better than ever before. Thanks are due in spades to Peter Roggman and his committee of people who have been involved in rethinking some aspects of the circulation, bringing music and kids' activities. Our partner in this venture community markets has assisted by increasing the number of vendors, and Peter put together a report based on some surveys we did that suggests that the average attendance at the farmer market has more than doubled this year as compared to last year. So, it's, in some respects, a victim of its own success. It's getting harder to get down there, but I can tell you from personal experience that this stuff is great, and it's worth the wait. Walk if you can. And we've invited Peter to come and report on the survey results at the next meeting on the 27th.
I have friends who live as far away as nearly mail pack. They come to that farmer's market. They love it.
I've encountered a few people in the same circumstance, coming from a good long distance, and so we have some copycat neighboring markets, but they have a ways to go to catch up with the great stuff that's going on in downtown Pleasantville. So, thanks go not only to the current committee, but to the past committee led by our own Minnie Barard, who built the foundations of this thing and kept that thing going at a time when it was an uphill battle, and handed it over this year, a well-deserved reprieve, with a good bit of momentum that Peter and his gang have taken advantage of. So, just to let you know, the other things we're talking about in work session, we had a meeting for an hour or so before our regular meeting with our management staff discussing their compensation issues, and as we continue to grapple with the budget. And in work session after our regular board meeting, we'll be working with our fiscal advisors, talking about bond issues and the overall debt environment, and the other items on our list. Our discussion about possible community development block grant funds for a sidewalk on Parkway Terrace, and terms the county has proposed to attach to that. We're also talking about work we need to undertake on the recreation center, the old recreation building, the building at Great Oak Lane and Bedford Road, which is currently closed, but which is in need of some maintenance. Trying to come to closure on the Foxwood Wall repair, and a decision about what to do and when to do it, which may include the decision to forego that for the short term in anticipation of taking it on later. We have some discussions about the water fund, capital planning, as I mentioned, and a report on the 2010 music festival. So, that's what's going on here in the Village Board. Anybody else have anything to add to it? Any member of the public want to comment, raise a question? Again, call in at any time if you have comments or questions, the number (769) 1677. With that, we will go to our resolutions. Steve, number 199.
Resolve that pre-checked register dated September 13th, 2010, covering check numbers 67341 through 67514, and water transfer number 67340 have been reviewed and are hereby approved as listed below. General Fund, $244,462.21. Miscellaneous Revenues, $102.26. Water Fund, $15,413.51. Capital Fund, $29,231.27. Refugees Fund, $25,980.67. Pool Fund, $6,128.87. Trust and Agency, $4,470. For a total of $325,787.79.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Minnie?
Resolve that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, August 23rd, 2010, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye. Motion approved.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville has received a copy of the fiscal year-ending 2009 justice audit, justice court audit, and will cause the same to be filed with the Office of Court Administration pursuant to Section 2019-A of the Uniform Justice Court Act.
Is there a second?
Second.
We annually engage in auditor, not only for the village, but also for several subunits of it, in this case, the Justice Court. O'Connor, Davies, Munson, Dobbins, municipal accountants have issued their independent auditors' report, and report that the statement of cash receipts, cash disbursements, and cash balances presents fairly in all material respects. The cash received dispersed at the balances of the Village Justice Court, and everything squares. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Brian?
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes New York State Department of Environmental Protection to access parkland for the purpose of a Catskill aqueduct erosion restoration project at Lake Street, subject to the execution of an access agreement and approvals of regulatory boards and agencies having jurisdiction to review and approve said project.
Is there a second?
Second.
We met with the New York City Department of Environmental Protection, which is the agency that's responsible for the New York City watershed regarding its project. Patty, you want to describe the scope of this?
Certainly, Mayor. The DEP is going to be working up at Nana Hagan Park to restore the original stream and the course of the stream of Nana Hagan Brook as it comes through our parkland property alongside the aqueduct. Over the years, there had been some erosion, and the stream had realigned itself to the point where it was causing a problem for the aqueduct and for the aqueduct's covering. So, DEP intends to go up there and to, as you saw in a PowerPoint, mitigate this and re-channel Nana Hagan Brook in that vicinity. They do have to go before the Planning Commission for review, and...
The Brook actually goes over the aqueduct at one point.
It does. Yes, it does.
And there's erosion of the, potential erosion, and failure of the aqueduct.
It shouldn't be doing that, but it does.
The area where the work is to take place is actually above what we typically think of as the parkland, but it is still Village of Pleasantville land in an area that's mostly wooded, and...
Well, it was wooded.
Well, even this area is still quite wooded up beyond the aqueduct, so...
It's dead wood. There's a lot of wood.
Tree stumps.
At any rate, some thought that it may have been Hurricane Floyd that started the process of the stream heading in a different course. So, the work that's to take place was described to us in detail by DEP, and also by the consultant engineers, in what I think we all thought was an impressively wellPut-together plan. And, for the most part, what they will be doing is rearranging the gully. It's not concrete or pipes or any of that sort of thing. There may be some circumstances where they had some rocks along the way to help...
Can I ask, why are we voting on this now, though, as opposed to when we actually have the agreement? Because, as nice as that presentation was, it left me with some questions concerning the silt in our pond, where it is now, you know, a lot of that construction, they're going to be moving a lot of earth. They didn't have very good answers for all that. They had some, and I believe they'll mitigate it, and I believe they got the best intentions. But, the last thing I want is our park to suffer any damage from this, unintended or otherwise, and so I just want to make sure that that's...
I'm under the impression, I think Steve can help me with this, the Planning Commission will address all of that.
Okay.
On our behalf, I mean, they would not get past that permit process without demonstrating that there's no impact on the rest of the parkland and its environment. You know, there is a wetland up there. We talked about that. There needs to be some definition of that. So, I know DEP is very sensitive, you know, to the environmental issues up there, and our Planning Commission would cover that during its review.
But do they cover, would they cover the mitigation? I mean, there is going to be some impact on the pond and everything else, just it occurs to me, just because they are going to move a lot of earth up there. The mitigation and how DEP will respond to that is covered by them, and we don't have to worry about that on this board with the passage of this?
No, we will have environmental consultants.
Would you agree, Steve? Planning will look at that carefully and indeed engage professional assistance if needed. What I would say also, as Jonathan mentioned, we've been concerned about siltation in Nana Hagan Pond. And I think it is fair to say, and this will be vetted by the Planning Commission in the course of review of the DEP project, that some of the siltation we have suffered in Nana Hagan Pond may in fact be a result of the natural erosion of the old, of this new stream bed, as the water ended up moving from its traditional course and sort of cutting a new path across the ground. It may have picked up a lot of stuff and sent it in the direction of the pond. So, I think DEP made a fairly convincing argument that, in the end, restoring the historic path of the Brook is probably the best thing for the health of our pond as well.
But will the Planning Commission get that linkage between, you know, any problem that there was with that Brook and the increased siltation of Nana Hagan Pond? That's my concern. Because I'm just concerned that DEP, or the aqueduct people, just sort of say, "No, we're concerned with this piece of property, and the lake is something else." But the lake isn't something else to us. It's downstream to us.
Well, I brought that up a number of times in our conversation, and I asked...
I'm just concerned that the Planning Commission has that background.
They'll get that direction.
How about this? Steve is the liaison to the Planning Commission, and a longstanding Planning Commissioner member prior to his tenure here, so can you take on the mission of making sure that those issues are well-understood by Planning?
Certainly, and I think it probably would be a good idea to take out a copy of the minutes from this evening's meeting, which respected this issue.
Great.
And we're specifically asked to look at the issues that were raised by board members, which I think were very important. Brian and Minnie raised those questions there.
Great.
Board wants to look at.
If you can just keep us up to date, Steve, as the liaison to Planning, as this progresses, just so we're aware of what's going on. So, all right. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
193, Steve.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the mayor to sign the employment agreement for the village administrator, not named here, but I believe that's Patty Dwyer, with us this evening. Date is September 1st, 2010.
Is there a second?
Second.
It is the aforementioned village administrator, Patty Dwyer, and we are signing a new contract agreement, her contract actually expired May 31, 2010, and she graciously continued in our employ during that time period. This is a new contract that goes through 2013. And let me say publicly, Patty, how much we value your service, what a good job you do, and how much we appreciate the flexibility you showed in this new agreement.
It's my pleasure to work here and to be here. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Minnie?
Whereas requests for proposals were advertised in the official newspaper for a parking lot license agreement to occupy three parking spaces in the Memorial Plaza parking lot for the purpose of four higher transportation services, and whereas requests for proposals were received in the village clerk's office on August 4th, 2010, as follows. The bidder Leroy, am I saying that correctly?
Leroy.
Leroy's Point to Point bid $1,000 per month with an in-village rate of $5 one-way, and Pleasantville Taxi and Car Service bid $375 per month with an in-village rate of $6 one-way. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby award the parking lot license agreement to Leroy's Point to Point, doing business as 769 Taxi, Greeley Transportation, and Mercedes Transport, 6 Skyline Drive, Hawthorne, New York, 10532, in the amount of $1,000 per month, and as per the terms set forth in their agreement dated August 4th, set agreement to begin 10/1/2010 and terminate May 31st, 2013, as per the RFP.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let me put you some context a little bit, because this is a matter that I've received quite a few phone calls about, and I think many others on the board have as well. For many, many years, we have had three taxi spaces at the train station on the Memorial Plaza side, and those have been sold on an annual basis, one each to three different companies, for, am I correct, $500 a year? So, our total revenue for the three spaces was $1,500 a year, and there were three companies that had the right to use those spaces, and in theory, each was reserved for one of the companies. As a lot of you are aware, there have been points in time when the train station and the downtown were ill-served by taxis. There was no reasonable expectation that you could find a car there at points when you might want one, and there were also some points in time when the quality of the service and the quality of the vehicles was in question. In recent months, perhaps, I don't know, a year or thereabouts, a new company was established, Pleasantville Taxi, and many, many residents have commented what a fine job Pleasantville Taxi has done, and they have provided much expanded service relative to the service that residents believe existed before. And, a lot of residents have reached out to me, and I think to other members of the Board, to encourage us to support the new service of Pleasantville Taxi. It was not our idea to change the arrangement from the sale of three different permits, but we were lobbied very, very heavily by Pleasantville Taxi to provide an exclusive arrangement for them, so that we would have a single taxi company serving the Village of Pleasantville. We sought legal advice on that and got the answer that you are probably not surprised to hear, and that is that it is not within our right as a village board to assign a village asset of this sort to a single company without the opportunity for others to compete for it. So, we issued a request for proposals and received these two proposals that were just described, one from Leroy's Point to Point. As mentioned, they proposed to pay $1,000 a month for the three spaces. Pleasantville Taxi proposed to pay $375 a month. Leroy's proposes an in-village rate of $5 one-way. Pleasantville Taxi proposed an in-village rate of $6 one-way. So, we're confronted with a circumstance where Leroy's has offered, in their bid, $8,000 a year more than Pleasantville Taxi has, and they have offered a one-way rate that's a dollar cheaper. So, those are numbers that are pretty hard to argue with. I will say from personal experience that I have been impressed by the work Pleasantville Taxi has done. We have asked in this contract, indeed required in this contract, that a minimum of two cars be available to meet every north and every southbound train that stops at the Pleasantville train station. And so that establishes a standard of service that's required as part of the terms. We have the right to terminate the agreement for any reason, but certainly for failure to fulfill the requirements. And both of the two bidders have responded with their bids under those terms. So, we are confronted with a circumstance here where, speaking for myself, I see no alternative but to advantage the village to the tune of $8,000 a year over the other bid, and to advantage the travelers by a lower rate as part of the contract for trips within the village. So, I know that's a source of concern to lots of people who have been in favor of one or the other bidders, but I remind everybody again that we're not sitting here in the context of a private business. We're sitting here in the context of a government, and we are not required, nor permitted, not able, to do other than we're doing right now. So, anybody else want to comment on it?
Mayor, can I just say something? If people do want to use Pleasantville Taxi, they can call Pleasantville Taxi. This is not precluding them from doing business in the village. This only provides spaces in the parking lot for one particular company, not two or three, as we used to do. But, essentially, it doesn't preclude Pleasantville Taxi from doing business with anybody in the village. If they're comfortable with their service, they can call them, and they can pick them up.
So, a good point. Thank you for adding that, Patty. I think all of us are nothing but pleased by the increase in the availability of cab service, the increase in the quality of the cars, the increase in the quality of the drivers, and the overall benefit that it has produced for the village. And I can assure you that, within the confines of what we're committed to do, we will encourage and foster the lively success of every quality company we possibly can here in the Village of Pleasantville.
Well, I'd like just to add that we did give, we were given some latitude for preference to, an operation is located in Pleasantville, so we had some leeway. However, the differential in these bids were just, does not lend itself to being able to, from a legal, from our legal department's standpoint, our legal advisor's standpoint, to even contemplate that. If it was a, you know, a couple hundred dollars here or there, I think you could probably figure out a way to do that, but the gap is just, it's too big to even contemplate a preference, which was built into the contract as well. And I second Peter's, I've watched these guys grow and develop. I like them. I wish this was a different scenario, but this is capitalism at its best, I guess, so...
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Jonathan, 195.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the request from the Pleasantville Recreation Department to hold its annual ragamuffin parade on, God, it's already this time, on Saturday, October 30th, 2010, beginning at 11:30 AM with the rain date the next day, Sunday, October 31st. And further, hereby authorizes the police chief to post no parking signs in Memorial Plaza starting Friday evening, October 29th, and to tow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great day, one of the great days in the year for Pleasantville. Minnie Barard is coming as Dan Marino, am I right?
Actually, I won't even be here, unfortunately. I was Dan Marino too many years in a row. They know who I am. But, you know, there's no farmer's market that day, so don't be looking for the farmer's market if it's October 30th.
Although, there has been some discussion over whether there was a way to negotiate both of this.
But I was told by the village administrator and Linda...
It's impossible.
That is impossible. Farmer's market is just too big.
Understood. So, just mark your calendar, Saturday, October 30, beginning at 11:30 AM, the Ragamuffin Parade, and also mark your calendar that, starting Friday evening, October 29th, and we'll post it. Will we get the big county electronic sign that we borrow, Patty?
Hope so.
To remind people not to park in Memorial Plaza for that next morning at risk of being towed. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Brian?
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorize the village treasurer to establish capital accounts for purposes of recording revenue and expenditures for the following capital projects. The solar array for DPW facility, which is getting federal aid at, for $248,211.20 with an appropriated fund balance of $27,500. And the second account is FEMA mitigation assistance for Water Department infrastructure at Lake Street Pump House. Federal aid, $45,000 and zero dollars for the appropriated fund balance. And be it for the result that the village treasurer is authorized to appropriate $27,500 from general fund balance to comply with matching fund contributions for the solar array project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe that, especially the FEMA mitigation, which I think people have not heard about before?
Sure. FEMA held some meetings around county after the March storms, and there was a disaster declaration made from those storms. And they offered federal assistance for two projects, well, for two expenses. One would be reimbursement of any direct expense communities incurred from the storm, and we were able to get... we were able to get somewhere around $6,000 to $8,000, I think. $7,000 in reimbursement for the labor and the expense of all of the tree and brush removal that went on for a good part of the month after the storm. They also had available, through some other congressional act, money available to mitigate things that if, for lack of mitigation, they would have perhaps been, you know, the cause of another disaster. And Steve was able to put together a project at the Lake Street Pump House that involved some erosion to a stone wall, the culvert that's along, you know, the street itself. We have encased in there some water pipe, some transmission main that really needs to be secured better than it is. There's been some loose stones and some other things happening there. So he spoke to FEMA, and they agreed to pick up about $36,000 in costs for this project, which basically is, it's a scope of work to replace, looks like about 30 feet of water main, and to remove stones from the embankment along the wall that has crumbled into the stream bed. So FEMA will pick up 75%. The state contributes 12.5%, and the village contributes 12.5% toward the total budget.
You know, it's really, if anybody's gone by there, especially during a storm, the water will breach that area, and it's done many times. And the worst was this past, that spring storm we had. It breached again, and the wall just started coming down, and then that pipe was totally exposed, and then the pipe, the next thing you know, the pipe was broken.
Will we do this work ourselves?
We will have this work contracted out.
Contracted out? So does that mean that we have it engineered and...
Yes, but FEMA picks up those expenses as well.
In addition to 45% included in the 45?
That's included in the total budget. It's not a very big project, but we've been working on that as it...
So we think the $45,000 is covered?
Well, that's the FEMA, that's the federal aid portion, right?
We have, there's no contribution.
No, that would be, that would be almost total project between 45 and 55.
$45,000 is the total project?
We just need to start the budget now, but we think that's probably...
So in the end, we need to contribute 12.5% of that?
Right.
Oh, I see. Okay.
All right. Thanks to Steve for having put that together to...
Yeah, that was a big get.
To give us that benefit. And then we've discussed in the past the solar array for the Department of Public Works facility. We received $248,000 in federal stimulus funds that will allow us to put a solar array on the roof of the DPW facility. That's a project that we will be bidding jointly with the Village of Briar Cliff, which got a similar grant, and certainly a positive development that will have a good impact on our energy cost at DPW going forward. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Steve.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village treasurer to establish... No, that's mine the right one?
197.
One pass, sorry, did that one. Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby acknowledges the appointment of Bernard Gordon, 17 Brookfield Place, to the governing board of PCTV.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bernie, our mayor emeritus, for being willing to assist in the governing board of PCTV. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the residents of Sarals Lane, house number 1 through 55, to hold a block party on September 25th, 2010, from the hours of 4 to 11 p.m. And further, authorizes the police chief to cause the road to barricade to prevent vehicular traffic for the stated hours and cause notice of the event to Pevac and the Pleasantville Fire Department.
Is there a second?
Good thing you're here, chief. You're getting all of these authorizations.
Sarals Lane, I think one of the legendarily lively block parties in the Village of Pleasantville.
And another one that I haven't gotten a party to.
Part of a great tradition. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Number 199, Jonathan.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the mayor to sign the letter of agreement with Con Edison with respect to the transmission line maintenance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
We've had an extended discussion with Con Edison over a long period of time regarding the work they have done in the past and will do in the future on transmission line maintenance, and have arrived in an agreement that will, we think, give us some better notice and better control over that work going forward, and also assist us in some remediation near our park. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Number 200, Ryan.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the request from Ashland Avenue residents to hold a block party on Saturday, September 25th, 2010, rain date, September 26th, beginning at 3 p.m.
Is there a second?
Well, I don't know.
Are you not invited to this, Jonathan?
Tyoga's been totally written out of this thing, so I think I'm going to have to...
Maybe they have a reason for that.
I'm going to abstain, nothing. I'm voting no. I'm kidding.
You can't get off.
Jonathan, although we front on Ashland Avenue?
You're invited.
We are not on the list either, so we may have a difficult...
This is on Bedford.
Only because you didn't sign.
Oh, that's funny.
No.
The front's on Bedford.
I front on...
This is a good party, too.
Tell you, it could have its own block party, the smallest block party in Pleasantville.
Every nice block party. Come on up.
Did we have a second on it?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Have a good time on Ashland Avenue. And now, number 201.
Yeah, tell people to come up to the one way.
The shoe. Steve.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from Grove Street residents to hold a block party on Saturday, September 18th, 2010, from 9 a.m. to 10 p.m.
That's a block party I want to go to. Grove Street.
It's always, I mean, this one starts at 9 a.m. because they bring in outside resources. It's quite an event. Did we have a second?
That's a good block party.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a great time. Any further comments, announcements? Word from the peanut gallery, and I have a motion to adjourn.
So, motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will see you again on September 27th.